So greetings everyone once again. Um, I will introduce myself. My name is Cambay and I will pass over the mic to Quey and then the mic goes round until we are back. Thank you.
Okay, Cambay, thank you very much. Um, okay, so good evening everyone, good afternoon, good morning, depending on where you are joining us from. So my name is Quey Friday. I'm a member of the Tiap Wikimedia User Group here in Nigeria. So I'm happy to be here. Meanwhile, I think Elena will be the one who are going to introduce last. So um, yes, so I would like to pass the mic to um, Abi Kado. Abi Kado? Abi Kado, are you there? Okay, we can barely hear you. You can speak up? Okay, I can only see your mouth moving but I cannot hear you. So uh, maybe while you have tried to solve that, maybe we'll pass the mic to uh, Babi. Ishak.
Okay, good evening everyone. I am Ishak Babi, a member of the Tiap Wikimedia User Group. It's nice to be here this evening. I pass the mic to, I pass the mic to Danjuma Antoni.
Yeah, I guess. Danjuma, are you there?
Austra se ne prezentam.
Give a microphone. But I use that on the microphone.
Okay, so um, how do guys, can you um, please introduce yourself?
I'm not too Latina.
Okay, okay. So I guess we are having some technical challenges related to about network connection. Elena, you know, we from Nigeria here, we have some serious issue when it comes to network. Yes, so um, please, you just be here with us. So maybe uh, while we are doing this, I think we just go straight to the point. Maybe uh, if I get permission from Cambay, I would like to introduce our speaker. But I will just uh, take it there from here.
No, before, before you introduce Elena, Daniel has not introduced himself.
Sorry, Daniel.
Uh, hello, do you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Daniel, I'm from Bucharest and I work at Metropolitan Library of Bucharest. And I am a, a young collaborator for the Wikipedia. I have, I don't have much experience about that. I discover Wikipedia to Elena. She opened this passion to me. And also for two other friends, also librarians. And we make small projects in Romania, small campaigns. Uh, that we, we choose certain themes, uh, certain things of interest, like movies or certain type of movies or certain type of books. Uh, and we write about them. We choose a period of time in which we do the research and we have a meeting in which everybody makes at least one Wikipedia page. And I think we're doing fine. Elena can say more about this if she's satisfied with us or she isn't. But we're trying to get better and of course, find new people to join us in this, in our campaigns regarding a certain team. We, we, most of the time we like to find people that are passionate about something, an idea or certain type of movies or books or they want to talk about it and we make, we try to make a new, a new member about that. And we, we succeeded. We have some beautiful campaigns that, that worked fine for Romanian Wikipedia. We also discovered that we, in Romanians in our country, there are a lot of pages or subjects that are not treated well on Wikipedia. They are missing information and we try to complete these pages. Uh, so we make a lot of translations, but we also write a lot about Romanian subjects that would be of interest for the Romanians but for the people worldwide also. That's what we do. I hope I didn't talk too much.
No, not at all. And you are doing a wonderful job. And thank you so much for being here, for supporting me and for joining our, our beautiful meeting about sharing cultures. Thank you so much, Daniel.
Pleasure.
Thank you very much, Daniel. Yes, so maybe we will just pass a lot of the mic to Quey and then Quey will introduce Elena.
Okay, so thank you very much, Daniel, and thank you, Cambay. Uh, so uh, today is going to be a very special section where we will be going to be looking at uh, something a little bit different, but still in line within, with uh, uh, work and contribution within the Wikimedia space. So introducing our facilitator speaker for today, uh, which is no other person than Elena, Elena Daniel, Daniel, Chief Librarian of the, of the country, Library in Jezze, and a Wikipedia volunteer since 2022. With active involvement in the Wikimedia community, she has presented in national and international conferences. She has presented at including CEE Central Eastern Europe, Mekans as uh, 2003, Istanbul 2025, uh, Salonik 2025. She also, she was part of the Wikimedia team of 2024 at Catolich and workshop in Moldova, focusing on the role of libraries in the open knowledge movement. So as a member of the Wikimedia of Romania and Moldova, she advocated for free access to knowledge and built bridges between libraries and Wikimedia project. So she plays a crucial role in preserving endangered languages, traditions and cultures by offering a free and collaborative platform where knowledge can be documented and shared globally. True project that brings together diverse communities, such as those of us who are here in Nigeria and other Sub-Saharan region, uh, to document local knowledge and so that, to make it visible to the world. Articles in native languages not only support linguistic diversity, but also empower communities to project, uh, to protect their heritage and strengthen their identity. Now, in this way, Wikipedia increasingly becomes part of the world's cultural heritage. Now, a living process that reflects and preserves human diversity. When every Wikipedia is not only writing articles, she are writing history. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you Elena, our presenter for the day. Elena, over to you. And thank you for having me again.
Yes. Thank you so much for this presentation and thank you for inviting me. I hope it's gonna be perfect because I'm, I'm very nervous, but also very excited and happy to, to join you in your wonderful project. And I would like to start by saying just, just a few words very quick about my user group. Um, we are Wikimedias of Romania and Moldova. And we are a small community, I would say, but we are united by a strong belief that knowledge should be open, accessible and shared. So I say about ourselves that we are a group of passionate contributors who work at the intersection of culture, education, science and civic life in order to make Wikipedia projects stronger, both in Romania and in Moldova. That's what's special about us. We are a group serving two countries, Romania and Moldova, as we are two countries that share the same language. Romanian language is spoken in Romania and also in Moldova. And our mission is to raise Wikipedia's relevance, credibility and visibility. And we do this not just among usual users of Wikipedia or other Wikimedia projects, but especially among institutions like museums, libraries, archives or research centers and also among cultural and scientific communities. And we also aim to close possibly existing gaps like geographic, gender or, or social, demographic, because they could limit participation and knowledge sharing. And in this context, several of our strategic goals are to invite new contributors on Wikimedia. And this way, we can make sure that fresh voices are heard and empowered. Also to increase the amount of materials made available by our GLAM partners that are shared on the free license. And a very important aspect, we want to improve the quality of the content on Wikimedia projects. Because as you already know, it's not only about quantity, but Wikimedia is about quality. And I think it's enough about our group. Um, my presentation about today, as you already mentioned, is about the beauty of sharing culture and of becoming friends through such wonderful projects like the ones Wikimedia are, are doing. Um, in my opinion, culture means much more than the monuments we build or the objects we preserve in museums or in archives. It is the living fabric of a community. And the language people speak at home, my language, your language, and the songs we sang at weddings or the stories we tell around the fire, all these rituals that mark the passage of time and the festivals that bring entire villages together. This is what we call intangible heritage, the practices.
So Elena?
Yes.
So would you like to share your screen or your, your slide or should I share it for my end?
Uh, please, if you could, if you could share it for me because I have a problem with my laptop. Don't ask me about technology, it's not my fault. But when it's about sharing, I don't know where to press, where to... So please, if you could help me with it.
No problems.
That would be very, very great.
Yes.
Yes, perfect. Great.
Just without to find the location where it is.
Uh, next slide, next slide. Okay, perfect. Perfect. Yes, as I was saying about the intangible heritage, um, it reunites all the practices and expressions and knowledge that cannot be touched but that shape the identity of a people. And without language, oral traditions and music and rituals, culture could become hollow, stripped of its soul. And this could be a very sad reality that we really don't want to happen. Heritage becomes local when it belongs to a specific community. Um, and it is rooted in a particular place and in a particular history. Like the beautiful dances of your culture or the embroidery of Romanian folk blouses, like the one I'm wearing now. It is a traditional Romanian blouse, it's called ie. And I'm very proud to wear it. Or like the storytelling traditions of countless indigenous people. All of this are local in origin, but their value extends far beyond their borders. And to preserve local heritage is to preserve humanity's diversity itself. Because every tradition is like a little thread in a vast tapestry. And if too many threads are lost, then the richness of the whole is diminished. So local heritage, I think it gives people identity and pride, but it also offers the world lessons in resilience, creativity and the many ways of being human. And yet, this heritage is very fragile. Because globalization spreads dominant languages and media and cultural products so quickly that smaller traditions struggle to survive. It's sad, but it's the, it's the truth. And younger generations may abandon their ancestral languages in favor of global languages that seem to promise more opportunities. Oral traditions fade as elders pass away without recording their knowledge. And festivals, rituals risk being simplified or commercialized, um, turn into tourist shows instead of living practices. And the danger is cultural homogenization, where unique voices can be lost and the world becomes less diverse, less colorful and finally, less wise. This is why protecting intangible heritage matters, not only for the communities that carry it, but also for all of us. And preserving local languages, traditions and rituals ensures that humanity's story remains varied, complex and deeply human. Um, I would tell you now about one of the most powerful ways to safeguard culture. I think it is through language. Because on Wikipedia and across Wikimedia projects, communities can write articles in their own language or about their own traditions, creating this way a permanent and accessible record of knowledge that might otherwise be left only in memory. Like a single article, for example, written in your language or about your people does more than inform. It gives the language digital visibility and reminds speakers that their voice matters. Dictionaries, lexicons and dictionary entries add even more strength, ensuring that vocabulary, idioms and expressions are preserved for future generations and for learners who may rediscover their heritage. But culture is not just about words written on a page. Culture lives in songs, in stories and in oral histories that the elders passed down. And Wikimedia Commons makes it possible to record and preserve these beautiful treasures. For, for example, I think about a grandmother's lullaby or a storyteller's tale or the rhythm of traditional drums. Audio and video recordings capture the emotion, the sound and movement that text alone cannot carry with it. And in this way, communities can create digital archives that future generations can hear, see and feel. And then we have WikiData. WikiData adds more layer by giving structure to this knowledge. Cultural artifacts, clan names, festivals, traditional tools and even places of ritual can all be entered as data, as structured data. And once structured, they become easier to find, to link and connect across languages and projects. This transforms local heritage into part of a global network of knowledge, where someone researching festivals in Africa or traditional architecture worldwide may encounter your Atiap story. Also photographs are equally important. And through Wikimedia Commons, images of festivals, traditional dress, crafts, tools and architecture become open and freely accessible. These pictures are not only document culture, but also they allow the world to see its beauty. For diaspora communities, they can serve as a bridge back home, a way to keep memories alive when distance separates them. And ultimately, here comes Wikipedia. Wikipedia itself becomes global outreach. Um, an article, an article written about a festival in southern Kaduna can be read in Europe or in America or in Asia. And a child in your community can discover his own traditions online. Or a diaspora family can reconnect with practices they feared they, they were fading. And by opening a window onto local culture, Wikipedia helps ensure that what is unique and precious in one community becomes part of the shared heritage of humanity. Uh, on the next slide, I wrote a few words about the challenges we encounter. Because preserving heritage on Wikipedia platforms is of course not without challenges. The first and most important need, I think, is the voice of the community itself. Uh, native speakers and culture bearers must be at the heart of the process. Without them, articles risk becoming shallow or inaccurate, missing the deeper meanings that only insiders understand, those specific things that only they know. And their participation ensures that traditions are represented with cultural sensitivity and respect rather than reduced to stereotypes or misunderstood by outsiders. And there are also practical barriers, like access to internet is not always reliable. We all have been through this. Or technical problems like my screen sharing or something like this. And sometimes computers or smartphones may be scarce. Even when the tools are available, communities need training to learn how to edit Wikipedia, upload media to Commons or to use WikiData. And skills development is just as important as enthusiasm. Because without it, much heritage remains undocumented, locked in the memories of elders who may not have the digital literacy to share it, although they want to do it. Another challenge lies in verification and trust. Knowledge passed down orally may not exist in written sources. And this makes it harder to meet Wikipedia's requirements for references. You all know how important it is, this rule, for every article written on Wikipedia, for every statement, we must have a written reference. And this is a huge problem, not only for traditions, but also in my case, for example, in Romania, it is a problem about articles about women. Because there are not so many sources speaking about women. They are much more speaking about men and it's not fair. We are fighting to, to make things right. Um, and also we have to make sure that content be safeguarded against misrepresentation or misuse. For example, sacred rituals being presented out of context or cultural symbols being commercialized without permission. So careful editorial work and community oversight are essential to protect heritage while sharing it with the world. And finally, there is a question of sustainability. Creating an article, recording a song or uploading photos is just the beginning. But who will maintain that content as language evolves, as new festivals emerge or as practices change? Because we are always changing, it's a natural fact. And without ongoing commitment, cultural documentation um, risks becoming outdated or forgotten. And true preservation requires building systems and habits that ensure continuous updating, so that heritage remains a living presence rather than a frozen snapshot of the past. Um, after this general introduction, I would like to continue by telling you about a beautiful project that we did together. We did it in the autumn of 2023. And it was, I'm sorry about my cat. She's traditional from Romania. Okay. Um, we did this project when two Wikimedia communities, we were thousands of kilometers apart and we decided to work together on something new. We are very brave. Um, the Wikimedias of Romania and Moldova User Group and your Tiap Wikimedias User Group, we launched together a pilot collaboration called Editing Together in Tiap, Romanian and English. And although the idea was very simple, in fact, it was very, very powerful. We wanted to translate and exchange knowledge across three languages, English, Romanian and Tiap. Tiap is your language. And I read that it is a language considered vulnerable as younger generations increasingly shift toward English. And by bringing Tiap into conversation along with Romanian and with English, this project aimed not only to enrich Wikipedia, but also to make the Tiap language more visible and strengthen its presence online. Uh, on the next slide, we can see that this project lasted from September to December 2023. And in this period, volunteers from both groups translated a wide variety of articles. Your editors worked on Romanian topics like the Romanian country, our capital Bucharest, Transylvania, that is a very beautiful part of our country and where the legend of Dracula originates from, um, about Romanian literature, about our national poet Mihai Eminescu or the writer Herta Muller. At the same time, Romanian editors translated articles into Romanian about Atiap people, the Tiap language, your religious traditions such as ab voi, I hope I'm pronouncing it well, and cultural contexts like southern Kaduna. And this way, our both communities had the chance to learn about each other's histories, traditions and identities while also making this knowledge accessible to global readers. But more than a project, this was not just about translating articles. It included workshops, both online and in person, like you did in Nigeria. You did local gatherings that helped so much, training new editors in how to write, translate and improve Wikipedia articles. And also special tools were created to support the translation process. And this collaboration was promoted widely through presentations in Romania, like the one I did in my library in Jurju. Jurju is a very, very small town in, in Romania. It's, but it's the closest to our capital, to Bucharest. And my library is very small, we don't have many resources, but I really want to do beautiful things. And I think that by getting in touch with the right person, we could do so many things, if only we want to do it and we have passion for, for this. Uh, so perhaps the most meaningful, meaningful impact of this project was cultural. For your community, it meant seeing your language and traditions recognized and represented on an international platform. And for Romanian volunteers, it was a chance to discover a culture far away and to share our own heritage in return. And for both sides, it was proved that Wikipedia is not only an encyclopedia, but also a meeting place where cultures, languages and people can come together always in a friendly space. And in the end, Editing Together in Tiap, Romanian and English became much more than a project. It turned into a, a connection between communities, an exercise in mutual respect and the small but significant step in preserving an endangered language while celebrating the diversity of human culture, which I think is pretty awesome. Um, I also want to talk a little about the obstacles. Because there are obstacles, but despite them, the opportunities are immense. And Wikimedia offers more than just a set of online platforms. It offers a future where local voices are heard and valued. For your community and for countless other communities, these tools create space to preserve what might otherwise be lost, like a language slipping from everyday use, a ritual remembered only by elders or a festival whose meaning would fade away with time. And by capturing them now in text, in sound and in image, communities make sure that their heritage will outlive the present moment. But I think that Wikimedia does more than preserve. Wikimedia connects. Because an article written in your language may be read by a child in Kaduna or by a researcher in Europe or a member of the diaspora who longs to reconnect with their roots. And a photo of your festival, I yet Atiap, can inspire pride locally and curiosity globally. So structured data about clan histories or traditional crafts can place your car... So structured data about clan histories or traditional crafts can place your culture side by side with the world's many others, reminding us all that human diversity is a treasure and not a barrier. So the path forward is about partnerships and participation. When communities take ownership of their cultural representation, when elders and youth and volunteers, when all them edit together, when local initiatives and local meetings meet global platforms, something powerful happens. It's the moment when culture not only survives, but it thrives. And Wikimedia can help, but the heart of preservation will always be within the community itself. You are the heart of the community, and it's everything thanks to you. And in this way, projects like our beautiful project are not just isolated experiments. They are signals of what is possible, they are just the beginning. And they express the idea that collaboration across borders can strengthen endangered languages, and that global and local knowledge can enrich one another, and that digital spaces can become places of cultural renewal. So the future of heritage is not only about looking back. It is about ensuring that traditions, languages, and stories continue to evolve, inspire, and shape identities in the generations to come. And with Wikimedia as a partner, small communities can step into that future with confidence, knowing that their voices will not be silenced, but we'll echo wisely and forever. And now, looking ahead, I think the most promising strategies for cultural preservation are those that empower the community itself. And the first step is to encourage more people to write and upload articles in your language. Schools can play a vital role, introducing students to the idea that their mother tongue belongs on the internet just as much as English, French, Spanish, I don't know. And community leaders too. Community leaders are very important because they can inspire pride by supporting projects that place Atiap knowledge on a global stage. And beyond writing, culture should be heard and seen. Photo and audio documentation projects can capture elders telling stories, reciting poems, or singing traditional songs. And if recordings, once uploaded to Wikimedia Commons, they become a living archive that preserves the rhythms and tones and all the pictures of Tiap heritage for generations to come. Like the voice of a grandmother or the sound of a festival with drums and everything, they can reach not only local children, but also diaspora families and researchers all over the world. Also, practical skills are essential, because organizing local workshops and editing parties can train community members in how to edit Wikipedia, contribute to dictionary, or upload materials to Commons. And I know you are doing a wonderful job with your WikiCamps, congratulations for this. Because in these spaces, as you already know, people learn by doing, and the act of editing becomes an act of cultural pride and of friendship. Every photo and every article, every word entered in your language is a contribution to safeguarding identity. Tools like Wikidata can expand this even further. By mapping cultural sites, or recording festival dates, or listing traditional tools, knowledge becomes structured and interconnected, and it allows anyone, anywhere, to trace the threads of your culture across the web of global knowledge. And finally, preservation thrives on collaboration. Linguists can provide expertise in documenting and standardizing the language. NGOs can bring funding, equipment, and training opportunities. And together with the local communities, they can ensure that projects are sustainable and impactful. And when all of these efforts converge, like writing, recording, training, structuring, and collaborating, the result is not only the preservation of heritage, but also its renewal. And your story becomes part of the whole world's story, carried forward with dignity, with pride, and with shared responsibility. And just one more thing, I would like to mention that, in my opinion, and I think that everyone agrees with this, it's so very important to preserve a local language and a local culture. Although there are so many other languages spoken, and English is there, and we all about English, but it's very important to preserve a local language because I think that each language carries a unique knowledge and a special worldview and cultural identity. And when a language disappears, it is a tragedy, because we not only lose words or expressions or something like this, but we also lose stories, traditions, we lose people, people that lived and will not be mentioned anymore. And someone really dies when he's forgotten. So preserving a language means preserving people's identity and giving younger generations pride in their heritage. Thank you, thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you very much, Elena. That was a very beautiful and meaningful, a well-packaged presentation there, so thank you very much. Sincerely appreciate that, thank you so much, thank you so much. Yes, so ladies and gentlemen, as you can see, this is Elena with her presentation, and it is quite very solid, very, very solid. It opened our eyes in so many different perspectives. And she gave, the presentation also provides us with a guide and a reason to why we should document our languages. So Elena, thank you very much. So and at this point, I would like to call on the participants. If you have any questions for Elena, so that maybe she can just look into it and respond to it quickly before we move to the next part. So anyone with questions for Elena? I believe you all listened to her, you all listened to her beautiful presentation. So I believe we have had some things running over our head. Maybe it's time for us to bring it out, so that we can see how we can respond to all of that.
I really wrote this presentation, you know, I spoke from my soul. And when I make a presentation, I don't want to say technical things or theory or this you must do, this you must don't. But I write it from my soul, and I say what I believe is true, so.
Yes. So thank you very much. So anyone with questions for Elena?
We don't have questions, I don't know if you can hear me.
Very well, Daniel.
I think Elena pointed almost everything, I don't know, everything, it's a big word. It pointed a lot of what Wikipedia can mean and the connection between people using this tool can do for the communities. I mean, in the old times, if you want to know something about a distant part of Earth or distant culture, or even a culture that is next to you, all you can do, you could take some academic research about that. If there is a little academic research, it's possible you won't find anything because you don't have all the resources. Now we have the possibility for every culture to pick up. I don't know if you can hear me, I'm sorry. And also, I think what Elena pointed in the presentation is the fact that we can come closer together using this tool. Because I'll give you one single example. I have a friend which made a PhD, which is a comparison between the funeral, the ritual funerals in Romania and Mexico. Now, Romania and Mexico, it's, one is on one side of the planet, the other, it's on the other side of the planet. If you stab me on the street and ask me something about Mexico, I will say almost nothing, because I don't know much. And I'm very sure the Mexicans don't know much about Romania, it's not a famous country in that part of the world. But studying, finding some tips on the internet, especially Wikipedia, she actually discovered that there are common grounds in rituals in Mexico and Romania, which is something very interesting. For, I don't know if there are other researchers that find this distinct. And she managed to make a PhD out of this, but the idea came from the internet. So I think we're on the right track.
Thank you, Daniel, thank you. It's well articulated, so thank you for that contribution. So anyone with additional contribution or comments to what has been said this evening? Sorry, just as Elena mentioned, you know, we in Africa, in Nigeria in particular, we are having this problem with internet connection. So the whole thing has been kicking us back and forth, back and forth. So it is part of the challenges we are also facing around here. So at this point, maybe I would just like to hand over the mic back to Camba, to share his thoughts and comment. Camba. Your mic is muted.
Here is raining too. In Romania, it's very cold for a few days. And it's very cold and it's raining, and I miss summer.
Okay, yeah, so it's raining here, so and you know the rain tends to distract the internet, because we are having a very weak internet connectivity here. So Camba, are you having some technicality? Because your mic is muted. Okay, let me see if I can unmute you. Let me see if I can unmute you here. Sorry. Afternoon, maybe you need to refresh your connection. So while we are waiting for Camba to reconnect, I would like to let you know that we from the Tiap Wikimedia User Group here in Nigeria, we are being quite active with our activities here. So the Mentoring Program was initiated since August, and it is going to run till December. And we have been having a lot of Wikimedias all over the world, from different regions, joining us online to also share their thoughts regarding the movement, just as we did here. But today you did actually wonderfully, very well. So yeah, so and we have been making, we have quite a number of new people joining in. And by the training they have gotten here, they have been contributing so immensely building the Wikipedia and contributing to the free knowledge. So it is quite a very robust one for the Tiap Wikimedia and for the participants too. So they have been quite resilient, as you can see, almost everyone on the call right now. Some of them, we are not able to join, but for those who are on the call, they have been contributing. And even yesterday, we had impersonation, where we come together, we all come together, and we put things through. We were able to show them on how to contribute to Wikipedia, and to contribute to Wikidata too, and how to upload images, and all of this, they have been quite impactful. So it is making a lot of sense already, and having people like you on the call, I believe, it also adds the spices to the whole thing. So Elena, thank you. So at this point, I would just want to add, you know, the last time we held a collaborative project, that was 2023, what I know, there was this Alex, we have Alex. It's been long I had from Alex, and I know for Claudia, we have been having some sort of conversation. I just hope they are all doing very well. So I think Camba is back, so I would just like to hand over the mic back to him. So Camba.
Thank you very much. So like someone said in the last Wikimania, that technology is not anybody's friend, so the whole thing is just messy. So thank you very much for the presentation, Elena. And thank you very much also to Daniel for accompanying Elena, because it's actually very nice. By the time we have someone that is escorting our presenter, and we are trying to give Daniel an award for escorting Elena to the meeting today. So but my only question is that, why is it that Daniel didn't participate in the Romanian Tiap English pilot project? Because we wanted to see a male, but all of them were females. But then it seemed good, we have all females. But then we are actually very happy to have you today with us. And the presentation today was very, very, you know, encouraging, because some of us who are here are actually going to school, are probably thinking about how to participate in the Wikimedia project and what capacity. Sorry, the rain is falling very, very, you know.
So the rain is falling heavily over here. But I don't know if you can hear us at this time, because the rain is falling so heavily. Yeah.
Anyway, it's very messy. We actually saw the presentation back then. It's nice. I would guess some of us who are present here, all of us who are present here, are probably going to be excited. They will be really, 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 really excited. And you see what you are doing, thinking, and what you want to do. It's not really like a regular, 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 but we're going to have first of all, we're going to start by talking about here, and start by yes, to you guys, yes, to you. So those of us who are in the group of activities, we just are on stage, you know, probably, but then going to have pictures and then back to us, back after the course. So I was very intentional with, I would have to do that to me during the course of the video. When you see people dancing, you see most people dancing, please, they put all them, make a video, make some T-shirts. And then you can define it, I don't need to do, or you can do it as a piece, or you can get it. You may never do, many people have never seen certain instruments before, I mean, they have never seen certain dances before. And I know Elena is, and people like her, I think, if you look for a situation where they will just be watching to Africa for some time, and then later, who take you back. So that you see our cultural, you know, parades and cultural dances. And actually, they are usually very, very interesting. And if you are not used to them, well, I don't know, I'm not following that, those ones are used to them. For me, I've not seen more than when I was younger. But as I grew and I travel to these places, I see, you know, certain things are so new to me. And I get fascinated by them, and I have got pictures of them, and not just have got pictures of it. During, you know, Wikimedia, Wikinost Africa events, Wikinost Food Floor events, and other Wikinost events, and people who are used to these. You know, people really appreciate it, that have been actively used there in many ways that you may never have, you may never have seen without them. Also be protective of, because I believe your work, your culture, your home, people, and your culture, and your tradition, it's very, very. So let me say so much, I'm coming back, everyone goes. I just hand over my mic to. I just send the mic to whoever is speaking, to whoever is speaking.
Okay, so I don't know if you can hear me, because I can barely hear my onset because of the rain. So at this point, I think the, our time is fast spent. So I would like to hand over the mic to Elena for, if you have a final word before we close the session today? Elena, any final words?
Sorry, my microphone was muted, sorry. Final words. Accepting the fact that I'm very happy to be with you and thankful for your invitation, I want you to be aware that everybody can support editing and doing beautiful things on Wikimedia projects. And you can do this, as you are already doing, by mentoring editors, or even by donating to Wikimedia projects, or collaborating with local user groups, or simply by raising awareness about endangered languages. And there is no small act. Every act counts, like translating an article or sharing resources or amplifying community voices. All of this makes a difference, a huge difference, I would say. And we all must be aware that cultural diversity is such a beautiful treasure for all humanity. And each community's heritage is important, is equally important. And it adds to the richness of our shared global story, because we are all the same. And when I learn about your culture, you can inspire me with respect for diversity, for broadened perspectives, and prevent that homogenization I was talking about earlier of culture in this globalized world. Thank you. Thank you so much once again.
Thank you very much, Elena. Thank you so much. So Daniel, do you have any final word before you go?
First, I want to praise you all for the good work that you're doing, because it's the first time in history when information, and it's not only the academic information, the people's information for the first time is free. For example, without realizing, you're making the great change in eliminating stereotypes. For example, a few years ago, if you search something about Romania, you'll hear about only about Dracula. Let's say Romania was Dracula because a legend passed in other cultures and was transmitted all around the planet. You wouldn't know more about this. But now you can, if you really want to find something about my country, you can find dozens of articles on Wikipedia. It's the same for your cultures. And I think this is the most important thing, because it's the first time when the the information passed from the hands of the researchers in the hands of the people. For example, let's say you want, I want to find a study about your country. Okay, a researcher from your country writes a very good research, but it's not in a common language all around the, I don't know, it's not English, not French, nothing common. So you have to expect that some other researcher will translate, because that's what happens in the academic circles, translate something from that great research and put it in a library from a known university. For me, I must be connected with the universities and the academic world in order to go and find this piece of a study that is taken from another study in order to find something about your country. Now, these things all change, because you, you, the people from that country, you can tell your stories, you can present your cultures directly to me. If I want to find something about you, all I have to do is open the internet. And it comes from the source, from the people that are part of that culture. And also, in this way, we can save cultures or languages that are in danger, because we can actually talk with the people that still use that languages, that live in that communities, have something to say about that, that have a good memory of the cultural heritage. So I think we save more than the academics saved in their lifetimes. I don't know. It's, I think, I think this is the right way, in my opinion.
And I think I'm very lucky with such friends. Thank you, Daniel.
Yeah, Elena, thank you very much. We appreciate you. So at this point, I think in the absence of any other team, this meeting is going to almost a close. So what we want to recognize, everybody that is here today on the call, Babel Ushaku, we have seen you, we have seen how attentive you have been from the beginning, so thank you very much. And Belo Linda, thank you for joining us this evening. And Danjuma, thank you. Eli Samson, thank you very much. And Favour Haruna, we can, we see you, thank you. Dokas, thank you very much. And Sam Quai, we appreciate you all. So thank you very much. And on behalf of the Tiabu Comedians, our user group, and want to just say thank you to Elena and to her friend, Daniel, for joining us this evening. And we hope, Elena, whenever we call again, you are going to listen and you are going to be part of us. So we hope.
Thanks so much.
All right, thank you very much. So we appreciate you. So for me to you, I want to say thank you very much. And on behalf of the whole Tiab community, we appreciate you this evening. So thank you and have a wonderful rest. Bye bye, everyone.
Bye. Have a wonderful evening. And see you soon. Goodbye.
Bye.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, bye bye.